Opening floor is open now for any public comment, a public hearing. Item A will be consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport. Any comment? Hearing none. Item B, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. Any comment? Item C, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-05, budget for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22. Any comments? Hearing none. Item D, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-06, amending the zoning map of the city of Newport from R-2 residential to C-2 commercial, located at 644 East Broadway. Any comment? Hearing none. We'll move on. First item on the agenda, call to order. Our invocation will be led...
Mayor Roland Dykes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight. Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger, here. Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Item three, is approval of minutes of previous meetings, regular session of May 11th, 2021. Those minutes have been included in the packet. Have the chance to look at those minutes. We entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, May 11th, 2021. It has been properly seconded. Please signal your approval by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Item four is proclamations and our recognition of citizens by the mayor. Do have a proclamation for our seniors. This proclamation is for Elder Abuse Awareness Day, June 15th. Actually, it should be June 15th, 2021, but we do this tonight, so we're gonna... "A society that does not value elderly people denies its roots and endangers its future. Let us strive to enhance their capacity to support themselves for as long as possible, and when they cannot do so anymore, care for them. Whereas, how can seniors or valued members of society? And it is our collective responsibility to ensure that they live safe lives. And, whereas, it is recognized nationally that for everyone report, by without abuse, neglect, or exploitation, there are 24 that go unreported. And, whereas, abuse of elderly people is a tragedy inflicted against vulnerable seniors and is an ever-increasing problem that crosses all social, socioeconomic boundaries in today's society. And, whereas, seniors should be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of society. And, whereas, combating abuse and empowering of elderly people will help improve the quality of life for all seniors across the city, allowing them to continue to live as independently as possible, adding to their overall well-being. And, whereas, we are all responsible for building safer communities for the city of Newport elders. And, whereas, the welfare of seniors is in the best interest of all citizens and further adds to the well-being of all city of Newport community. And, now, therefore, I, Mayor Roland Dykes III, agree about the plan, June 15th, 2021, at Elder Abuse Awareness Day, and call upon all citizens and people in Tennessee to recognize elderly people in our community. In witness whereof, I affirm to set my hand and fix the seal of the city of Newport, Tennessee, 15th of June, 2021." Roland Dykes III.
Good job, senior.
I may not be the only senior in here, but I... No, you're not. Congrats, right? All right, our next item on the agenda is our communication to my city administrator.
Thank you, mayor. On our COVID update, we currently, as of our meeting Monday, there were only eight active cases in Cock County, which is as low as it's been probably since April of last year. There were, in the previous seven days, the positivity rate was zero. In other words, in the seven days prior, no one tested positive for the virus in Cock County. Employee-wise, we have no one that has been exposed. We have no one that is out sick. Everyone that has been in quarantine at some point or been sick are all back at work. So, for now, we're at 100%. Now, one thing I'd like to talk to you about is, as I'm sure you're aware, they have now put out that if you have had the vaccine, if you're fully vaccinated, you no longer have to wear a mask or socially distance. And around 38% of our county has taken one shot, and I think it's like 34% has had, is fully vaccinated. We looked at that Monday, too. I'm trying to go off from memory. But I've had employees asking me about our policy, and the best example is the garbage truck, okay? We got three guys on a garbage truck, and so for the past year and two or three months, they've been working all day long with a mask on. And so what I would like to do is to follow the CDC guideline, which is that if you've had, if you're fully vaccinated, you no longer have to wear your mask, but if you are not fully vaccinated, you do. Well, the snag with that is that you put people on the honor system. Like, you know, if Joe Blow takes his mask off and says, "Well, you know, I'm fully vaccinated," and possibly he's not the most ethical person in the world, and he's not vaccinated. There's only one way to find that out. And I have researched this, and it is legal. I would like, if you all do not have a problem with it, I am going to ask that employees provide proof of vaccination. It has been ruled at a level much higher than me that it is not covered by HIPAA. When we have asked people, they have come back and said, some of the employees, most employees are really good about it, but some employees have said, "Well, I don't have to tell you, and you can't make me." That's HIPAA. Well, it is not covered by HIPAA. That has been ruled that it is not. So, private entities have the right to require their employees to be vaccinated. Public entities do not, even if we wanted to, which I don't want to, but even if I did, we can't legally do it. It's already been ruled, and the governor and the legislature has come down with a bill on it, that you, that government entities cannot require vaccination unless it's a publicly-run hospital or a health department or whatever. But, you know, and I'm not getting into that. I just want to explain that that's not what we're doing, and we couldn't if we wanted to, but we can legally make them show proof of vaccination, and I would like to do that. And if you all don't have a problem with that, I'm going to. It doesn't require a vote or anything. I just wanted to make you aware of it, and if you all had any problems with it, talk to you about it and see, because I intend to do that if y'all don't have any reservations with it. I don't think it's fair to make people sit in a truck with somebody and wear a mask all day long if they don't have to. And I don't think it's fair to trust people to be honest, because sadly, they're not always honest. And this is the only way that we can make it safe for everybody, is for the persons that want to stop wearing a mask in these close confined spaces to show that they've earned the right not to, and the way you earn that right is to have your, be fully vaccinated. So, it is legal to ask for it. They do have to provide it. If they, now, I can't, you know, if they don't provide it, let us have to keep wearing a mask, and we'll put it in their medical file. We have two files on each person in personnel. They have two personnel files. One, a general personnel file, so if somebody comes along and wants to access their personnel file through the Freedom of Information Act, they can get into that file. We have a health file that is not for public knowledge. Anything that is in that health file is private, and we do not have to allow anybody to have access to, and it will be placed, a copy of their vaccination card will be placed in their medical file. So, it will not be available to anybody to look at other than us.
James, the health department gives a card, too, on request. They've got a record of it. The health department's got a record. You had it around years. They've got a record of that, and they also furnish you a card. If you've not got one, they'll fill you out a card up there.
Yeah. Well, I've got my card, you know. About everybody that, anybody that's had the shots, I mean, now, you could lose it, but if you've gotten your shot, you've got a card. And so, you know, it's probable that, from everything that we're seeing now, that you're going to end up having to have a booster shot. It's going to be like the regular flu shot. Every year, you're going to probably have to go back and get a booster, because the thing mutates so much. But I would like to try to make it as fair and easy on people as I can that have had the shot, where they don't have to sit around with a mask on, and this is the only way I know to do it, that we can do it, and it's, the mayor and I discussed this a little bit, and, you know, and I agree with him 100%. You know, the honor system, it works great as long as everybody's honorable, and sadly, everybody's not honorable. So, that's the only way we can do it, and it work. So, if y'all are good with that, I'm going to implement that. Thank you. The, we had our first summer concert in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce last Thursday. Some of you were there. We had around 180 people. The concession stand ran out of food, and so I think everybody, the weather cooperated. It looked like it was going to rain, but it went around us, and so it ended up being a good time, and we had a good crowd, much bigger than what we had last year, of course, but that was a good turnout. Next Saturday, June 12th, we're going to have our second litter pickup. The first one went really well. This will be our second one. I've had several comments, and I think some of you all have too, from folks saying that they, they can see a difference, that they feel like that the town's cleaner since we've been, you know, emphasizing cleanups and doing what we can to try to get everything looking better. I've had multiple compliments about the parks, how good the parks look, how good the downtown streets look, and that they feel like that you can see a general improvement over all citywide as far as the litter and just the clutter goes. We finished cleaning up. They burned out property over on Smith Street today, got it cleaned up, and we'll be moving on to downtown. Once the new budget goes into effect, we'll start on some of the properties downtown. We're getting back on track with our audit. Of course, we've been held up, you know, waiting on NU's inventory to get turned in, and that's, that has finally been taken care of, and so our auditors are moving forward to try to get our audit put together for last year. We're, you know, it was due by the end of March, so we're behind. The comptroller has got us in a holding pattern. We can't do anything to move forward with this year's audit, which will be due after, they can start working on it after July 1st, but we can't sign a contract or anything until the prior audit is, has been submitted. So, we're in a holding pattern as far as signing a contract for this year's audit, but Brown and McDaniel is moving as fast as they can now to try to finalize our audit so we can get it into the comptroller and get a copy of it in y'all's hands. Okay, that's about all I've got. I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Profit at this point.
I was just going to say thank you to a couple of people. I've heard several comments about our police department, their fire department on the, they locked the traffic off from the Tennessee Thunder, kind of, there's about, what, 5,000 motorcycle more or less?
Four thousand.
Four thousand.
That's a big amount, but anyway, people appreciated you taking your time and effort to honor them sort of as they come through Newport. There's a big honor for them, and I just want to tell y'all thank you, tell you boy, that's it, that.
Head on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of boards, commissions, and committees. Item A, consideration of reappointment of Newport Utility Board, Mr. Craig Wilds.
I make a motion to reappoint Craig Wilds to that position.
Second.
We have a motion on the board then to reappoint Mr. Craig Wilds to Newport Utility Board. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye.
Need roll call for this?
Okay. Tina, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay. Item B is consideration of reappointment to Newport Utility Board of the position Willie Green.
Mayor, I spoke with Willie last week, and Willie said that when he, when he signed on, he just signed up to finish out a term, and it, it was an honor to serve, and he would be glad to help out in the future, but, but he just signed up to finish out that term, so.
Do we have a candidate?
I'd like to make a motion to Chris Edmonds.
Chris Edmonds.
Edmonds, yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion then to appoint Mr. Chris Edmonds to the Newport Utility Board for the position vacated by Mr. Willie Green. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by the normal sign of aye. I'm sorry. I keep doing that. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to, before we go on, I'd like to thank the people that's been on this before, Jeff Antrim, Val Gatlin, and Willie Green. I've been on before, and they've a lot of responsibility and a lot of headaches with it, and I want to tell them, thank you for their service, too. They're good people, all of the fine gentlemen.
Okay. Item seven is reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Do we have anything for Town Preservation Alliance? No report. Okay. Item eight, old business or unfinished business, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-03, budget amendment for the city of Newport.
And, Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance 2021-03, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2021-03 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion then to approve the ordinance as presented. It's been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, sorry. Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Item B is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School.
And the caption of that ordinance is ordinance 2021-04, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the city of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2020-2021 for Newport Grammar School.
I'd like to motion to accept it.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion then to approve. It's been properly seconded. We will need for the reading of ordinance 2021-04, budget amendment for Newport Grammar School. We need roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Item C is consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-05, budget for the city of Newport for fiscal year 2021-22.
And that's ordinance number 2021-05, an ordinance of the city of Newport, Tennessee, adopting the annual operating and capital budget for the city of Newport and the annual budget for the Newport Grammar School and tax rate for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022.
Motion to approve ordinance number 2021-05 as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion then to approve the ordinance as presented. It has been properly seconded. Go by roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Item D, consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2021-06, amending the zoning map of the city of Newport from R-2 residential to C-2 commercial, located at 644 East Broadway.
And, Mayor, that is the caption, so that's a good job.
It's a little redundancy, isn't it? We need a motion. All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-06 as presented. It's been properly seconded. Please approve by roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderwoman Louanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine is new business, and A is consideration of hiring a firefighter for the Newport Fire Department.
Yes, Board and Mayor. Fire Department's requesting permission to hire Noah Carson for the opening that we have currently at the Newport Fire Department.
I'll make that motion to hire Noah Carson.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to hire Mr., what's his name again?
Noah Carson.
Noah Carson. As hiring a firefighter for Newport Fire Department in question of Noah Carson. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And nay is like sign. Hearing none.
He's, he's not here tonight. He came this morning and got his physicals and all that stuff to make sure that he was good, so, and he is the number one on the, on the test that we had. He's selected next for the civil service, so.
You're getting ready to give another civil service test?
Yes, yes. Actually, Noah was the one we were going to have to replace, a retiree in a few months, and then we had the opening come up, so we pulled him ahead and got this one, and tomorrow night, we're taking the test to repopulate our list, and then hopefully our next one will be for when our retiree comes in September, we will replace, replace that, so.
Mayor, I'd just like to remind the council, we, I know we can't do anything this year, but in the future, it would require a charter change, but we need to get the hiring, firing authority back to the chief and the civil service board.
Okay, is that, that something you want to put on the agenda for a future meeting?
We can't do anything about it till next year, but I was just, I was going to remind the council, that's something we, we've talked about it before, but we've never seen, we've gotten around to do it.
Okay.
If the council so desires, we probably need to move forward with that early fall, sometime then, because it has to go to the state legislature. We have to prove that it has to go down there. They have to pass a special act, then it comes back to us to change the charter. It's a fairly complicated procedure, not to say we can't do it. It takes about six months.
And achieving one of the last things they vote on in the legislature, in late March or early April, right when it's winding down, but it has to go through committees. There's a couple of committees it has to go through. I would suggest, in concurring with Attorney Hurst, that you need to start on it in the fall. When we redid the police civil service charter, the process was actually begun by the civil service board. The city council asked the civil service board to draw up the changes, and so the civil service board drew up the changes. Then those came to council, and council voted on that, and then sent that on to Nashville. And it does take a super majority to pass that, which means four votes. So, but that, but this, yeah, it would be good not to wait. I agree with Mr. Hurst. You need to do that probably in September, October, and then ask the, the fire civil service board to draw up the changes and make recommendations on what changes you'd like to see, and then let the civil service board draw it up, them vote on it, and recommend it to council, and then the council vote on it, sending it on to Nashville. That's how the police one was done, and I would recommend that, that the fire be done the same way. That way, by getting the civil service board involved, the men have a say, because the civil service board sees to it that, that the men are protected. And so, that would be my recommendation. You don't have to do that, but, but that would be my recommendation. That's the way the police civil service was, was done when it was changed, and I would recommend doing that. And like I say, that way, the men, the civil service board gets with the firefighters and asks them what they think about it, and they have some input into it, and, and of course, you know, I can sit in, or any of you all can sit in with the civil service board and, and talk with them and make recommendations or whatever. But, but that's the way I would recommend that it be done. It worked really, for the police department, that worked really well, and it kind of took, there wasn't any hitches with it, and I think by doing that, it kept anybody from feeling like that, like the city was trying to kind of cram something down their throat or something by letting the civil service board be involved in it.
I agree. It should be streamlined across the board for all of them that have civil service boards. September will be here before we get to earnings.
And my recollection is, Impas actually came up and, Bruce Mauris, they came up and worked with the civil service board.
Rex Barton.
Yeah, and they'll do that, the fire department.
Yes.
Appreciate you, John. You're done, Eric.
Thank you. Appreciate you, guys. Thanks for the support.
Item B is consideration of Tennessee Picnic music concert on the Riverwalk. Most of you probably recall that, well, not last year, because everything was upended last year, but the year before last, Tennessee Picnic gave permission to have a music concert on the Eighth Office Emancipation Day for the Tennessee Picnic. We'd like to request approval to do that again this year on August, I think it's August the, Saturday, August the 7th.
I make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion on the board then to approve the request as presented, been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
And nay is like aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Apparently, no bids, purchases, or expenses this year. Tim, what, you laying that on the job, man?
It's next month, it's gonna...
Item 11 is comments from citizens. Anyone wish to speak? You have five minutes. You have five minutes.
Nobody come up. Don't wish to hear, come on.
We're here, my name is Missy Ellis, and this is Candy Baxter. We're here on behalf of the Three Point Booster Club, which represents both the boys and girls basketball teams at Cock County High School. And it's my understanding that there hasn't been a rubber duck race done in the city here for at least a couple of years, and we would like to ask for approval to do one as a fundraiser for our Three Point Booster Club program for the boys and girls basketball teams. We would sell the ducks in coordinates with the concert series on Thurs, every other Thursday, down at the Riverwalk, and then we would have the duck race probably the first Saturday in August, running from the Edwana Bridgeport Bridge down through the city. It would be supervised by coaches and other staff. And I've spoke with Ms. Ramsey at the Chamber of Commerce, and Mr. Fincham as well, and was asked to speak here this evening.
We need to vote on anything on this day. It's okay.
I make a motion if we need a motion for that.
I need a motion, I second. They've got two fine kids there, too.
We'd have to add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda?
Well, they're wanting to start, go ahead and start selling them, because it takes you a while to sell the ducks, you know? So, you need, you can't do it in just a shorter period of time. So, they called too late to try to get on the agenda, and I explained to her that this would be the only way she could get on tonight's agenda, would be to come and ask you guys to suspend the rule and add them to the agenda for tonight.
I make a motion to suspend the rule and allow them to be on the topic tonight.
I'll second this.
Okay. You need to vote on the suspension, on the motion to suspend the agenda and add the request to the night's agenda. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
You send the kids to burn.
Steve made a motion to approve it.
Steve has a motion on the board to approve the request?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion then to approve the request for duck race on August 7.
We just, we want to make sure it's not going to conflict with what you were...
Yeah, that's, I was just thinking about that.
Yeah, we can change our date.
Well, what time were you planning for this, because I do, the concert is planned for like 7:00 in the evening.
We would do it.
It would be earlier in the day.
Early morning to after, at 12:00 noonish.
Okay.
Because we just have to release the moment, because we'll pre-sell the ducks, so it's not...
How far down the river will you go? From, you said from Bridgeport to...
From the bridge at Eastport?
Yeah.
Down to, right at the Riverwalk, we can collect them there.
Okay. I don't see a conflict.
If they do it around noon, they should be well done before your event.
All right, we have a motion then to approve the request. It's been properly seconded. Please signify your approval by aye.
Aye.
And a nays like sign.
Be sure to coordinate that with the police chief, because you'll be on the bridge, and so, you'll need some traffic control there on the bridge. And then, make sure that you've got, I think that the last time they had one, it's been some years back, but I want to think, and Maurice may have a better recollection of it than I do, I want to think the rescue squad went out and went out into the river and scooped up the first duck. I want to think it who assisted with it, but I'm not sure. You will need somebody that's qualified to go out into the river by boat and snag the first one, and then, of course, get them all out, some process of getting them all back out of the river. And they will get by you, because they come, they come in a group, and they, it's easy for them to get past you. So, you may need to try to put like a net or something across to catch them as they come down. So, there's a lot of prep work goes into it to be prepared for, to actually carry it off.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for having kids.
Any other comments from citizens? Here none. Will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
Second.
We adjourn.